Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's Own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Y'all, I had a good time in Little Rock, other than, you know, it took me two days to get home. Okay, so I'm just a little upset about the weather in Atlanta last week. I mean, it was like a storm system that just sat on top of Atlanta and wouldn't let go. So I couldn't fly into Atlanta to leave Little Rock to get to Indianapolis, missed my flight, had to stay an extra night, then they flew me up to LaGuardia, got to LaGuardia, they canceled my flight back to Indianapolis. I'm telling you, I was not a happy girl. I had to fly down to Louisville and take a car, rent a car and drive home. That's how crazy getting home was. Obviously, getting to Little Rock was no issue, but getting home was a hot mess. But Indiana's Own Dana Black is back. And look, y'all, we are a week out from I D E A. If you don't know what this is all about, this is a place for Democrats to get together and learn how to run better campaigns, be better volunteers, all the good stuff, all the candidates coming together. So if you haven't already bought some tickets or decided to come down and hang out with the Democrats in French Lake, get your tickets. I promise you, it is absolutely a dang good time celebrating who we are as Democrats, that last party, right? Before we hit the nitty gritty and buckle down for that final push for the election season. You know, and you know what? I gotta give a shout out to Ohio. Come on, y'all, give it up to Ohio. 63%, 57% voted no on changing the rules on how to get ballot initiatives on. Listen, we can't have ballot initiatives. We don't, they're not constitutionally recognized in the state of Indiana. So unfortunately, Hoosiers will never be able to, unless we change the Constitution, have direct impact in policy. But in Ohio, they can. And yo, Republicans got their behinds handed to them over in Ohio. But my leader, because you know, he understands the situation as it is. Our leader, Phil Giaquinta, representative said, "This decision was a win for Ohioans, a win for women and a win for families in the Buckeye State. Ohio and the six other states where citizens are granted the right to decide the fate of abortion in the state at the ballot box are further proof that Republican anti-choice policies are not popular among the vast majority of Americans. Last summer, our caucus fought to give this same power to Hoosiers and House Republicans rejected it. They rejected this amendment simply because they know what we've all long known, that Hoosiers, like the majority of Americans, believe that the decision to receive an abortion is best left up to a woman and her family and healthcare providers. As Democrats continue to fight for women's right to control her body and own her own destiny, I hope the outcome in this Ohio special election is a reminder to Republicans across the nation that their anti-choice, anti-science policies cannot withstand the will of the American people." Y'all, I'm just saying, he ain't wrong. He ain't wrong. Now, I do wish that we could have a ballot initiative in Indiana. I do believe that we would come out on top, not just on abortion rights, but legalizing cannabis and a whole host of other issues that we would like to fight for. But the one thing that we can do is that we can show up to the polls, show up to the ballot box, make sure our voices are heard. I'm telling you, yes, there's 92 counties, but the vast majority of humans are only in a handful of counties. We need everybody to turn out. I'm not saying that we ignore rural Indiana. I am not saying that, not one bit. But what I am saying is that the people in these populated places, if we show up to the polls, anything can happen. I just want you to put your zen hats on and go back to November 2008, when Indiana turned blue. We can do this. All we have to do is show up. And I tell you where we need to be showing up more than anywhere else is next year, when we have an Attorney General on the ballot. You know, that fool, I mean, the Attorney General, Ty Riquita. Oh, man, he has been putting his foot all in his mouth over the last three and a half, four years, however long he's been in his office. He has been just wasting our money. He's been going down to the border. I'm sorry, Indiana's borders are Kentucky, Ohio, Illinois and Michigan. We don't, we're not on the Mexican border. So the fact that you are sending our tax out, using our tax dollars to go down to the Mexican border is problematic. The fact that you've not been focusing in on what needs to be happening here in Indiana is a problem. But what you will not do is have a press conference and talk about parental rights and not talk about all parents. So you know, he had a press conference this week talking about his parental, Parents' Bill of Rights. And there were a few things that he wanted to highlight, like, you know, parents' access to school boards. Well, I don't know if you've seen what's happening in Hamilton County, and my guest tonight will probably chime in because she's, I can tell she's fired up about life. But I don't know if all parents should be on school boards. They're banning books. Anybody believes that banning books is a good thing is problematic. And they haven't read a book on how bad banning books can be. And oh, by the way, it doesn't actually solve anything. I mean, my goodness, all you're doing is making things worse. Or how about the Texas governor who decided that they wanted to turn Houston school libraries into detention centers? Yeah, that's a thing in Houston. Crazy, crazy talk about letting some people into school board meetings or on school boards. But my thing is this, Ty Riquita ain't really down for all parents. Oh, no, 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 no. In his press conference, the Indiana Capital Chronicle reports, "Indiana Attorney General Ty Riquita released a fourth edition of his Parents' Bill of Rights document on Tuesday, outlining what Hoosier parents can do to oversee and participate in the part of our children's education that occurs outside of the home. Other questions chosen by Riquita's team were more confrontational, including one question, questioning his participation in a letter condemning target for LGBTQ+ display and asking what his office was doing to protect parents with transgender children. In response to an off-topic question about abortion, Riquita said his office is prepared to defend the state's pro-life. And being a warrior for the culture war, we have to love them, both the mother and the unborn child." But his answer to the transgender question was, "Well, I think that, well, I know what we do is make sure that it doesn't matter if you're transgender or not. Frankly, it's, uh, all children have the same rights. And even more important than that, all parents have the same rights, and that's how we approach everything that we do." Huh? When asked what the office would do in light of federal court ruling to partially block the law restricting minor access to gender-affirming care, Riquita seemed to contradict himself and said, "We're going to fight for the rights of parents to handle this upbringing of their children, not government, not in schools." Bro, you're contradicting yourself. You're not looking out for our parents because you literally just signed a letter with other AGs asking if you can get the private HIPAA-protected medical records of parent women who seek reproductive health care in another state and those parents who are seeking gender-affirming care in other states, since we can't get it here in Indiana. You literally are trying to violate people's private lives, their private medical history, their private medical records, so that you can possibly prosecute them back in Indiana. You're not looking out for all people. Guys, I need a solid quality, and I have one in mind, attorney who was past the bar to consider getting themselves on the ballot to run for Attorney General next year. Think about it. You won't be wasting money on frivolous lawsuits. I mean, we personally fund with our tax dollars, the ACLU of Indiana. I'm not even mad about it because they keep fighting for us. But wouldn't you rather see those tax dollars go into something like, I don't know, making sure that teachers don't have to like, you know, drive for Uber after their day job is over? Or that they can have supplies in the classroom? Or how about textbooks being free? Not the ones that they're shipping out of Florida, though, because they want to talk about, you know, they got history and slavery all messed up. So we don't want the Florida textbooks. But make free textbooks for people. That's what we could be using those tax dollars for. But unfortunately, we have to fight frivolous lawsuits every time Ty Riquita finds out that somebody wants to do something they want to do personally to their body. Think about that. Y'all, we gotta change some things. We can't have ballot initiatives in Indiana like they do in Ohio. And I congratulate Ohio for pushing out and turning away their Republican Party's power grab. And they were like, "No, no, no, you just wasted $20 million because that's not going to happen. We want to keep things as they are." And pretty soon, Ohio, in November, it's on the ballot to clarify women's reproductive rights in Ohio. So at least on our left and right, east and west, Illinois and Ohio, women will be able, and Michigan, women will be able to have reproductive freedom. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, Kentucky did the same thing. So literally, we on an island in Indiana. All four corners are covered. Hopefully, there's an organization in Indiana that will start raising money. So if a woman needs some assistance in traveling and hotel accommodations, we'll have a nonprofit organization right here in Indiana that will help those women go to one of those four states surrounding us, right? All right, that's my rant for tonight. You know, I gotta let y'all hear from my amazing, amazing sponsors. Today's show is brought to you by Boe's Unique Boutique. Click on the QR code. And for all Turn Left listeners, you can get a 10% discount on your order by using the code DEMOCRAT. Be sure to visit www.bomesuniqueboutique.com. All right, all right. And always, Black Pearl Studios is here for you guys to help you with your digital content. My prices are affordable. If you need some online material, you want to get your message out, you get into the crunch line. So if you want some videos or if you're hosting an event, you need an emcee, you need a public speaker, hit me up, scan the QR code. I'm always available, not always available, but get on my calendar so we can make things poppin'. You know, I'm the best hype woman in the entire state. So why wouldn't you want to hire me to come hype your event? All right, scan the QR code, Indiana's Own Dana Black, Black Pearl Studios. I'm here for all of your digital needs. All right, now I'm excited. Guys, you remember how we used to say that there was nobody ever going to win anything up in Hamilton County? And Hamilton County was red, 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 red? Not no more, not no more. My neighbors to the north are kicking butt. They are taking names. And I don't mean just in Carmel, but I mean in Noblesville and in Fishers and also in Westfield. All the cities in Hamilton County. Shout out to Dana Colbert, who is the Hamilton County Party Chair, who has been filling her slate and recruiting candidates. Shout out to Cynthia Johnson, who is the 5th District Chair. She is taking names and kicking butt. And they do it so cool, too. They are some of the coolest laid-back women you will ever, ever meet, but they get the job done. So I'm super excited that Hamilton County is represented tonight. And on my show, running for Westfield City Council, District 4, Alexis Lowry. Alexis, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
How's it going? What you been doing today?
Canvassing.
I love hearing, see, I already kind of knew that. We talked a little earlier today and she was talking about she was out canvassing, and I love that. How's, how has the campaign gone for you so far?
It's gone really, really well. Um, I've switched things up a little bit, um, you know, ruffling feathers.
I love it.
Doing things, doing things outside of the ordinary. But the ordinary hasn't been working.
Come on.
Around here.
Come on.
And, um, I don't know, I like to blaze new trails. I don't like to follow.
I like that. I like that a lot. I like someone who just thinks outside the box because that's how we get things done. So tell people who you are and where you come from.
Well, I'm Alexis Lowry and I come from Westfield, Indiana, born and raised. Um, I keep wanting to turn that into a song.
Okay.
You know, "Westfield, Indiana, born and raised, on the soccer field is where I spent most of my days."
Come on now with your fresh rinse.
Every time I say that, I'm like, I want to keep going. I haven't officially turned it into a song, but maybe, maybe I'll do something and we'll release it on election night.
Right, we can, we can release it on Turn Left. That's what I'm just saying, we just, you know, we do it like that.
Yeah, yeah. So, so anyway, I was born and raised in Westfield. It was a very small farm town community, 2,500 people roughly when I was born, and now we're pushing 60,000. So, so grown a lot. I think between like 2000 and 2021, we grew like 227%. Yeah, so fastest-growing community in the United States or one of them, or it might be the fastest. Um, it's fast. Anyway, so I grew up in Westfield, ran around town like normal kids back then. Like, I was never at home. I was just always eating dinner with somebody else and lived on the soccer field. Um, I, since I was three, I've played soccer. I still play soccer as an adult on the Adult Recreational League. I coached for the last 17 years, rec soccer, my nieces, my nephews, all my kids, foster kids, all of them. I think the first thing I really did that was like outside of the status quo was probably way back then. I think it was like eight, eight or nine, and I was a really good soccer player. And so somebody had said I should try out for the travel team. And there was no travel team for girls. So I just tried out for the guys' team and I made it. And I continued being the only girl playing on an all-boys soccer team for like, for 10 years, until we finally got the girls' team. Um, so, so that was literally my childhood, like Girl Scouts and soccer. That was it. And then I went to college, IU Bloomington, and met my husband. And that was pretty much love at first sight. And we got married right out of college. And a few years into marriage, we were like, this whole like pregnancy thing isn't really happening naturally. Uh, so fast forward 10 years and 13 miscarriages and a cancer scare and a hysterectomy.
Whoa, whoa, wait, whoa, stop, stop. Wow, sis, that's a lot.
Life's been interesting.
Wow, okay, we gotta, we gotta pause because that's, that's deep. Let's talk, talk about just a little bit, what helped you get through all of that? Because that, that's a lot.
I am an insanely optimistic glass, not even glass half-full. Like, if, if you're, if a normal person's glass is half-full, like mine's like overflowing and like spilling on the floor. Um, so honestly, like it, my uterus never worked.
Okay, okay.
So it never, my mom and my sister took my hysterectomy a lot harder than I did because I'd done, I'd done like 10 rounds of IVF. Um, and they weren't ready because their uterus worked. They weren't ready for me to, to have the hysterectomy. And I made the decision really, really quick. Uh, I was doing, about to do my 11th round of IVF, and we had been foster parents for like a month. So we had our, we had our first kiddos and they'd been with us for about 30 days. We were about to do our final and last transfer, using an egg donor for the first time. It's gotten like every parent that she's donated her eggs to pregnant. Um, so I had like these really, really good eggs, finally gave up on my own. And they saw something suspicious and was like, you know, you either need to have a hysterectomy, that's my recommendation, or we could do this experimental drugs type thing, and it'll really affect your mood and your husband won't recognize who you are. It'll be awful and there's no guarantee it'll work.
Right.
Or you have a hysterectomy. And I was just like, let's just do the hysterectomy. And everybody was like, whoa, like you can't make it, that decision that quickly. And I was like, I'm, you know, I just wanted to be a mom. Um, and at the time, I'd just gotten these kids. And I know I'd only known them 30 days, but they'd already lost one mom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They'd already lost multiple moms. And I was like, I just, I've been trying to be a mom for so long. And I finally have kids. I can't selfishly keep doing this when it's not working for a reason. Let's just take it out so we can move on with our lives.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what we did. So we had hysterectomy and, and now, and we ended up adopting those two kids. It was our first sibling set that we adopted. And we've fostered 13 now and we're in the process of adopting our fifth. Um, so I don't know, I think everything, you can say everything happens for a reason now that I'm on the other side of it. If you told me that in the process, I would punch you in your face.
Right, right. Well, can I just say that I'm an adopted child and how thankful I am that you, you know, didn't, you didn't stay in your pain? And that you decided to give love no matter what? You started with love because you wanted to have a kid with your, with your husband. Didn't quite work out, but you still wanted to give that love. So those children are the recipients of you saying, "I just want to love." Oh, my God, that is like one of the most amazing stories that I have ever heard on this show. Thank you, thank you for sharing that because there's someone who needs to hear that there is life after major disappointment like that. And okay, so you said you fostered 13, but you've adopted a set of siblings. Are you planning to adopt more or?
Um, well, we were never really planning on adopting any. Not that we were against adoption. We were always open to that if that's what came to it. But I just firmly believe that the point of foster care is reunification.
Okay.
So I always do anything and everything in my power to make sure that I'm an advocate for the biological parents and the kids. And if that's healthy and good and they get their stuff and they're ready. Um, I'm, I'm the adult, so I can handle the heartache. At the end of the day, I don't ever want to be a reason that I, I was, I was kept somebody from their natural.
Absolutely, I got you.
If that's an option.
I got you.
And so we were never really planning on adopting. And so we did, we did sibling groups.
Okay.
It's kind of complicated. It's just difficult because you also have to fill out the paperwork of like, what kind of kid you want? Where you can be like, I want a, only a girl under the age of two with blonde hair and blue eyes. Like, you can be really specific. And that felt really selfish, too, because again, I just wanted to be a mom and we were trying for so long. And so I'm a Christian myself, and, and so I was just like, you know what? We'll just pray about it. And we will never be sent anybody, like asked to take in any kids that we're not supposed to. So we're just going to say yes to all of them, uh, because we're crazy.
Man, listen, like you said, you think outside the box. You know, you opened up with, I think outside the box. And I just think that is just, you know, I'm kind of stuck because again, I'm an adopted child. And I know that, I don't know what my life would have been like if it had not been for Catherine and James. But I swear, my life is, has been beautiful because of these folks saying, "I want her. I want this little girl right here," and you know.
And that's, that's exactly what it comes down to, right? Like, every single time anything has come up, because I'm not saying it's not hard. It's like the hardest thing I've ever done. Regardless of how badly I wanted to be a mom, kids are kids.
Kids are, oh, my God. And honey, I was a talker.
Same. And, and so for me, it always came down to, I think I'm just really stubborn, but at the same time, I never want anyone to feel unwanted.
Yeah.
I'm like, even when it's really, really hard, I have a very supportive husband and I have an amazing supportive family, even if they are all Republicans.
Don't matter, you gotta love them anyway, right?
Right, like we're family, family first, you know? Um, that's like our motto. And so I just, when things are really, really difficult and they do, I'm just stubborn. And I was just like, no, like I'm never going to be that person that made them feel unwanted. I will suck it up, I will do the research, I will figure out how to help them. I will figure out how to be a better mom. So I can actually connect and relate so that we can hear each other, you know? Um, and so, so we only did sibling groups, which is why we've had so many. Because we've only been licensed for five years.
That's a long time.
Yeah, it's long for average. I feel like it's gone by, it feels like it's been like, I don't know, six months. But, um, so anyway, we always did sibling groups because my husband's really close with his siblings. My siblings are my best friend, like they all live within like a mile of us. We all still live in Westfield. And, and so I just never wanted to break siblings up. And so that became our thing. We're like, we're only going to do sibling groups. So all of my kids are biologically related to at least one other kid in the household, except for our current, um, our current baby, she's 13. And she is not from a sibling group. And the reason we ended up with her was, one, you have limitations to how many kids you can take in. Each kid has to have so many square feet per house. And so after we got to four, we only had the space for one more. And we weren't even open to taking new kids when we, when she came into our lives. The reason we, we brought her in was because we already knew her. Um, so when she entered the system, she's my niece's best friend. And I practically raised my niece from a very young age. So we already knew her. And so we were like, she's not going to a stranger's house. Like, she already knows us, she's coming here. And so she was re-unified successfully with her dad. And then about a year after that, he reached out to us and was just like, "I think you and Joshua, what's best for my baby, will you guys adopt her?" So she just moved back in in June. So we're now in the process of adopting her.
That's an amazing, that's amazing story and, and all the love and affection. But I mean, and I know that as you're running for council and you don't actually have a lot of input on this as a counselor. But as someone who cares for children and has children and will be the guardian and the spokesperson for children and in Hamilton County, how are you, as a parent, dealing with the school board book banning, anti-trans, you know, aspect of what the heck's going on up in Hamilton County?
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's such a confusing time. I don't understand, I honestly don't understand what some people don't understand. Like, you're, you're moving books that you feel are not appropriate for your children or any children, whatever, I'll just let that one go. Let's just say you're, you're, you're moving books that you feel are not appropriate for your children. And so you're moving them into the adult section that is literally made for books that are not appropriate for your children, who then send your children to that section? Because no one's monitoring that. My 12-year-old can walk to the adult section and grab the book.
And kids ain't stupid. Kids know how to get around everything.
And, and part of me is kind of like, are we, are we really to the point where we're, we're trying to prevent them from reading? Like, I can't, I have to like pay them to read. Like, now you're making it even more difficult for them to read. Why are we making the things you want them to do more difficult?
Exactly. I mean, it's like, we want to get the devices out of their hands and get them into reading. And no, 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 we're not going to do that. No, we don't, we don't want any parts of that. Does that make any sense to anybody?
I know, I know. And my teenagers are all like, ma, I mean, they're so like blasé about it. They're like, "Mom, it's not a big deal. I just look, I just get any book I want off of Amazon and read it electronically anyway if I wanted a book."
See, which is, which is so crazy. But here's the thing, the public library is for those that maybe can't buy. Like, you know, you're, I know what you're saying. And like, I know me and you, we can, you know, obviously go and get a book, but there's always those kids who accuse parents can't afford that. And that's what the library, my, my partner, my girlfriend Nicole, you know, she would tell me like, that was her way of occupying time, was going to the public library. You know, mom was working all the time and it was just a way for her to get lost in herself. And now we're taking that away. And they're actually targeting books design for teens.
I know. It's, it's just, honestly, I hate to say this is a waste of our, our conversation, but at the same time, like it's a political maneuver.
Of course.
To keep us talking about this, to keep us divided and divisive and not on the same page and keep us arguing. So it's like us versus them. And it's, that is the intent, it's the only logical explanation because it is pure and utter nonsense that you have people that are elected to the position. So it's not their expertise, it's not what they do for a living. Going in and telling experts with what they do for a living, that you're wrong, you're doing it, I can do it better.
See, me and you should be homies. I can tell right now, me and you should be homies. It's a rap, it's a rap. Indiana's Own Dana Black, I am talking to Alexis Lowry, who is running for Westfield City Council, District 4. Guys, I'm fired up. She got me fired up. Click on her donate link, donate to her campaign. Every dollar counts and she, whatever she needs, just, just donate $5, $10, whatever you can. Donate to her account. All right, I kind of interrupted you. Keep talking about how you, well, how, how did you get here? How did you end up wanting to run for office?
Uh, okay, so the truth, not that I would not give you the truth, but the honest God answer is my husband, he's the reason for everything. He's annoying, he's adorable, I love him to death.
Annoying and adorable? That's what Nicole says about me, I think.
It's, it's totally his fault. It's his fault and my kids' fault, honestly, because, um, this was never part of my plan, right? I mean, none of, none of my life has ever been a part of my plan. I'm just like a puppet on a string.
I love it.
It, it never goes the way, but I always, I'm very good at finding the opportunity and the obstacle, like very, very good. I'm like, okay, where's the opportunity in this?
Right, right.
Because life never goes as planned, like ever. At least it hasn't for me. So my husband is, he ran for state senate in '22.
I know your husband.
Uh-huh, I've met you before. I met you at.
I was typing your last name and I'm like, I'm not trying to talk to Josh, I'm good. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to talk to him. Okay, you know, I thought maybe it was just a cold ink-a-dink. I mean, you know.
Nope, nope. It's, it's all him. So he ran for state senate last year and I'm very, I was raised in a very Republican household, Fox News on all the time. And so it just, I had a very, I don't, when I believe in something and I learn about something, I am all in. Like, I go, I go in and I rewrite the script and I do it better and bigger than anybody else or I don't even look at it. So like, there's an ongoing joke in my family that I write about everything. And I'm like, no, I just don't talk about things I don't. And I'm like, no, I just don't talk about things I don't get.
Hello, I stay in my lane.
Yes, I stay in my lane. So for, so my experience growing up, politics was always very, my dad was always so angry and he was always like yelling and, and so-and-so is an idiot and da-da-da. And I just don't do negative at all. Like I'm like, ugh, stay away from me. I don't need that negative energy around me. I don't want the negative energy. I just, I don't do negative. Okay. Again, overflowingly full positive person over here. So I just didn't pay attention. I was, I was blissfully unaware of what was going on.
Okay.
And my husband is adorable and I'm madly in love with him. And I have been since the day I laid eyes on him. I would try not to cry talking about my husband. And so when he ran for office, I was, he asked me, you know, he's like, hey, what would you think about me running for office? And I was like, oh, please, they'll give you somebody else to talk to about with politics. Like, I was all in, like, please, go bore somebody else with that information. Um, and then he was gone all the time and he was always door knocking and I just missed my best friend. And so, and so I, I asked him one night, I was like, can I go with you tomorrow? And he said, you want to go door knocking with me? And I said, yeah. And he's like, you hate politics. And I go, I know, but I miss you and I love you. And so I just, I just want to be in your presence, right? So, so the kids stayed home, did their friend thing, and I went door knocking with him. And, and we went every single night by ourselves, just me and him hitting the pavement. And so that was the first time I learned two things. One, I am not the weird one. He's totally the weird one. Okay. I'm, I'm not alone. Most people know nothing about politics.
Right? That, well, yeah, I've been told, I've been told I'm a little.
Most people are blissfully unaware, okay? Cause he was running for a state level position. And when he would ask people what their concerns were, they would either talk about local stuff or national stuff. And it was the local stuff. Yeah, exactly. And it was the local stuff that kind of hit home for me. Uh, because I was born and raised here. Like I love Westfield. Like I don't, honestly, at the end of the day, I don't really bleed red or blue. I bleed green, like seriously, like through, through, like I love this city. The only reason I am running for council is because I'm running for council in Westfield.
I love it. Okay.
And so when we were going door to door and I was hearing local things, that was the first time where I really started talking about political whatever issues. Um, and my husband said, you should run for council. And I laughed. I was like, oh, okay. Me, whatever. And he's like, no, I'm serious. And I'm like, you've lost your mind. I don't know anything about politics. And he's like, you don't need to know anything about politics. He's like, we have enough people that know things about politics. Westfield needs somebody that loves and cares about Westfield and doesn't have a political agenda.
Yes.
He's like, you're the perfect person to run for council.
He's not wrong.
I, and I love and respect my husband more than any wife could possibly ever love and respect their husband. He always has my back. He's always my biggest supporter, my biggest cheerleader. He's always telling me when I'm wrong and encouraging me to do things when I don't think I can, not that that happens very often, but it does. Um, and so when he was like, I think you'll be great and I'll help you. And I've got a team of people that will also get behind you and, and help you learn the things you need to learn. I was like, okay, so what do I do? And he just was like, well, we gotta go file the registration and everything. And I was like, all right.
I love it.
So that's, that's how he got me. Um, yeah. And, and then the second half of that is my kids. And actually I have a little, I have a story about this that will kind of.
Tell me.
Help people.
Tell me. You got me riveted. I'm over here like, wow. I love, first of all, I'm, I'm a hopeless romantic as well. And so I love a good love story. So continue to, continue to give your man flowers. You know what I'm saying? There's nothing wrong with that. With, with so much hate and dysfunction in the world, to hear how much you adore him, that's, come on. So let's, okay, I'm, I'm waiting for another fun kid story.
That's like a whole nother podcast because I could literally like, I'm like, it's weird to me when people complain about their husbands and stuff. I'm like, he's not your best friend. Like, wait, you wouldn't need a girls' trip. What's fun? Like I want to go on a trip with my husband.
Well, no, no, wait, 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 now, I, I, I do, like my, my partner is like my best friend too. Like she, I had a buddy that, that was staying with me for a little while and she was like, do y'all wake up at six o'clock in the morning talking about politics? Because we are so alike, but yet so different. But I still have to have my occasional homeboy trip where boo, you go do your thing and I go do my thing. And then let's come back and talk about how much fun we had. See, I, I do get that part. So, but anyway.
Yeah. I, I think for me, because we have so many kids now, that I don't need the break from my husband. I need to like, I need my one-on-one time with my husband. Cause we had ten years of it, just me and him. So we had, I mean, we're great communicators. Like we're always on the same page. And now all of a sudden it's like, wait, you're doing what tonight? Wait, when, did you tell me about that? Um, and so it's like a little bit of E T S D.
That's all right.
My husband go. Uh, anyway, so the, the second reason why, um, I was running, I said, was because of my kids. And, uh, I'll try to get through this without crying. Um, so last, yesterday morning, my thirteen-year-old asked if we could do something, two mornings ago, she asked if we could do something tomorrow, which was yesterday. Cause it was the last day of summer. So today was my kid's first day of school.
Okay.
And I was like, oh, baby, I would love to, but I gotta go canvassing. And, and her response to that was, of course you do. And she walked off. And it hurt my feelings.
Right.
And I didn't say anything. I just, I was like, I'm sorry. And I left and I went canvassing because I had people waiting on me and volunteers waiting to go with me. And when I got home that night, we had dinner and then I was like, Malcomore. And I said, why do you think I am running for city council? And she's like, I don't know.
I don't know.
And I was like, I'm running for city council because of you. And she's like, what? And I was like, I'm running for city council for all of my kids and all of everybody else's kids that live in this city.
Yeah, yeah. It's okay. I love the emotion. That passion is, your passion is coming out, sis. Keep coming with it.
So for me, I'm, I'm sure I'm not alone here, but it's, I feel like it's an added layer because it took me so long to have kids. And I've adopted teenagers. And I've had, what my oldest is sixteen, I adopted her a year ago and she's a junior in high school. And so when she goes off to college, if she wants to come back home, there's nowhere for her to move. There's no attainable housing for a first time, a home buyer in Westfield or anybody else's kids.
Yeah.
And everyone's complaining about how Westfield's losing its hometown feel. Hometown feel has nothing to do with size. It has to do with the fact that the people you love most are near you and they're here. And this is their home also. That's what creates a hometown feel.
Yeah.
The reason I love Westfield so much, outside of it being an amazing city, that my grandparents live here, my parents live here, all of my siblings, my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, my kids, my nieces, my nephews. That's what creates the hometown feel. They can all afford to live here. And luckily for me, since I've been here for forty years, my whole family's grandfathered in.
Right, right.
Half of them would not be able to live here if they left and moved.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
That's real talk.
So I'm like, I am, I am running because I'm not ready and my kids aren't ready for me specifically to be done with me. I've, I've had a year or two with them. I've had five at the most, but the youngest ones, right? My oldest and my youngest. Um, and so there are some things that could be being done better in Westfield to make sure that we honor our history and, and grow smartly and conserve green space. And how a mixed-use facilities where you have people of different incomes and different lifestyles could all come together. So we, I mean, we are so separated. And we keep putting up all these separated, like, okay, the really rich people are over here and the medium-rich people are here. There's no room for anything under either.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know what? And that's a, that's a very good point that you were making because, um, I remember the first time I went to Atlanta and like, did like the tour of, um, MLK's, you know, Ebenezer Church in the neighborhood. And one of the things about black communities before, um, you know, because of redlining, all black people lived in the same neighborhood. So you would have the doctors, lawyers, principals and teachers alongside the, the mailman, garbage man. Um, and, and, and so everybody got, everybody was in the same community. That's what you're talking about. That was a thing that was forced on us. But that's what you're talking about, where everybody could come together.
It's, it's adding to the divisiveness.
Yes.
The way things are done right now, because what's, what's, you were the sum of the five people you spend the most time with, right? So that's why we're so separated, because hardcore Republicans tend to hang out with other Fox News watching hardcore Republicans. And the reverse is also true, right? Like that's just, you, you associate around like-minded people. But if you do that too much and you never allow anybody else in from different walks of life, different experiences, different educations, different viewpoints, you get what we have today, right? And so you have all of these people in a certain neighborhood, they're like, that's not a problem here because they don't know what's a problem because they're associated with a bunch of like-minded people. And you have the other people on the other side of the block that's like, why don't we have this? Why don't we have that? And they're like, oh, you should pull yourself up from the bootstraps and make it happen. And.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, okay, say spoken like somebody that had every advantage and resource ever provided to you.
I love it. I love it. And see, I, I, I hear your conversation and what I'm hearing you say is that we need more affordable housing. And you're not phrasing, because a lot of people hear affordable housing, they hear government-assisted housing or they hear low-income housing, but affordable housing is affordable at whatever income level you are at. And if you don't have affordable housing at every income level in your community, your community is either gonna struggle or become this really elitist place where you have to ship in people to do the work that you don't want to do. Because you, you want people, because you want people to cook in your restaurants, but they can't actually afford to live in your neighborhood.
Thank you. And that's exactly what's happening right now in Westfield. We have all of these new fast food restaurants going up, right? But there's no housing that somebody that would work in a fast food restaurant would live in. And then you have all these super entitled people that are PO'd because it takes them three hours to get their cheeseburger because nobody wants to work anymore. And I'm like, are you kidding? Nobody wants to work anymore. Like, let's, like, let's just completely negate what the employment rates are and are not.
Cause literally they are looking for employees under rocks right now. Like it's just, what are you talking about?
I know, I know. So I'm like, okay, so you want people to drive here to work at a Burger King because they can afford the gas? And why would they pass seven other Burger Kings on the way to our Burger King?
Exactly. And we know we don't want public transportation up in Hamilton County. Oh no, there's a brick wall between Marion County and Hamilton County. No public transportation. Because the, the robbers, the thieves are gonna break into your house and steal your seventy-inch flat screen television and carry it home on a bus.
Yep. And, and then on top of it, so the, the other side to that is we don't, we don't have a walkable city. So even though there are some people here, mostly the ones that got grandfathered in or like my teenagers that would love to work but don't have cars yet, they're the ones that need to fill those positions, but they don't have a way to get there. So I'm the transportation. And so our, our, the way our landscape is, is created right now, it's so sprawled out instead of developing like a vibrant downtown and having one dense area and keeping our farmland, farmland. They have everything sprawled out so much that you have to get in a car and drive across town to get to everything. So that means you have to have a parent working from home that can do that for you. That's added cars to the road, which is breaking down our infrastructure, making us have to do more and more repairs on the roads. We don't have the commercial tax base to support it. So we keep building more houses, which increases the need because it puts more and more cars on the road. And it increases our need for more police officers and more firefighters, but nobody wants their taxes raised. They don't want businesses to come here because they're like, it's like businesses are three percent, residential are one percent. And we're ninety percent residential and like ten percent commercial. That is part of that. We need to be being a welcoming, vibrant, kind city where businesses want to put their headquarters.
Yeah.
So we can offload that tax burden from the residents. We can afford to add more police officers and more fire trucks and firefighters and ambulances. We can afford to keep up with the infr- infrastructure of our roads and sidewalks and streets and preserve our green space and make it walkable.
I did not realize that you hit on something significant right there. The residency of Westfield is ninety percent, but the business infrastructure is only ten percent. That means most of the people that live in Westfield are commuters. And, um, Hamilton County, y'all keep commuting into Marion County to go to work, which I don't contribute any of our tax ba- base over here. I'm not gonna complain. Yes, I am. I'm always complaining. I'm always complaining. So you drive your, your cars down, mess up my roads, be mad about Indianapolis roads. Plus we know the, the funding formula is, is a mess. That, but it's, you're right. It seems there's a problem with the fact that your Chamber of Commerce hasn't been doing what they need to be doing to attract businesses to Westfield. Is that something that you want to work on? Um, and do you have like any ideas that you want to implement as a councilman or to something to think about?
Honestly, the, the first place you start is respect and collaboration. The reason businesses aren't coming here is because we have so much infighting. We've had people actually want to bring their headquarters here and leave because they were like, if the, the local government is that much of a hot mess, we don't want to touch that with a ten-foot pole. So they left and took their business elsewhere. And so until, like, why would somebody want to set up shop where all we're doing is calling each other names and fighting with each other? Like that doesn't give the vibe of like, they've got their stuff together. They enjoy being here. They enjoy life. We should want to bring more employees into the city. Like it just, and, and people also don't understand how things are paid for. They think it's all from like your property taxes. The other part of how we fund the public services that we have, which by poison fire or public services, is from our local income tax. But since most people don't work here, we're, we're adding to Carmel's local income tax and spending there. So they've got all this great stuff because Westfield people keep going there to spend their money because there's nothing to spend your money on here.
Well, see then, I thought the income tax went to the, to the, oh, it goes to the county you, I thought it went to the, the county you live in, right? But are you, you're saying that, okay, there, you're getting the income tax in the county, but it's because they spend their disposable income in Carmel, it, none of that revenue is coming back to Westfield. You don't have a sales, you're not, you're not generating any money from sales tax.
Right, right. So the, the food and beverage sales tax, I think is what it's called. I might have the wording mixed up.
That's all right. I just want to make sure we was on the same page.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And so that is like our biggest like revenue driver. But we're, most people, especially like young families, they want to like have nightlife, they want to walk around stuff. They go to the city's next. So I'm getting this information from going door to door, by the way. So this is just like stuff I'm making up off the top of my head. I ask people, where do you spend your money? What do you do on the weekends? And everybody leaves Westfield and goes and spends their money in the neighboring city. So they're benefiting from our money that we are making.
Yeah.
We're spending it in another city and they are benefiting from that because there's nothing to spend it on here. I mean, there is, but.
You have, I mean, already, already two big things. You want to in, in, improve, uh, affordable housing and you want to attract businesses to your community. Normally I ask people, what are your three things? But you are dropping dimes, sis. You are dropping dimes. What other, what other area of concern are you seeing in Westfield that you want to address as councilwoman?
Honestly, my biggest thing is the collaboration piece. I don't understand why, um, our local government has been so red for so long. Uh, the most successful businesses in the world prioritize a diverse board of directors for a reason. They're the most successful companies. It's important to have different viewpoints. Like you don't learn anything new sitting around the exact same people all the time. That's how you become ignorant. And.
But they're safe. They feel safe that way. And that's what, that's, you know, that's why we need D E I. Because if you don't explore what's outside of yourself, you won't realize that you'll be safe no matter where you go. And stop listening to dumbass people, sorry, uh, listen to dumb people talk about what's happened in another community they've never even been in.
Yeah, yeah. So I just, I, that for me is like number one, like I, I am a friendly person. I don't care where people align politically. I don't care if you are an atheist or a Christian or a Mormon or a Jew. Like that does, that has zero impact on how I treat you. And it just doesn't. Like I hug everybody, even if you're not a hugger. I'm like, sorry, you're not a hugger. My bad.
I'm a hugger. Oh my God.
Like I, yeah, so I just, I'm trying to do what I can in my community to bring people back together. We have so much more in common than not.
Yeah.
You know, it's always the loudest people on both ends. It gives like the entire group a bad name. But when I go door to door, I was actually just pulling the numbers today, just like how many doors, doors have I knocked on? How many people have actually told me to get lost? And I say it right out of the gate. I say, hi, my name's Alexis. I'm a Democrat, running for Westfield City Council. I have knocked on almost three thousand doors already. There's only just over four thousand in my district, by the way. So I'm setting on hitting every door more than once. Yeah, I'm going to every door because when I win, my vote is going to affect every single person that lives in Westfield, whether you voted for me or not. So I don't care. I don't go to your door and go, are you a Republican or a Democrat? I don't know what you are. I want to know what you care about. I want to know what you like about Westfield. I want to know what you think Westfield could be doing better. I want to know what you want from me as your next city councilwoman. Because that is how we create a community that everybody can thrive in. It's listening to one another, learning from one another and not making a split second judgment because you heard the word Democrat or Republican. So, so I'm going to every door. And out of the 3,000 doors I've been to, I have been to 18. So less than 1% of the people have refused to talk to me.
Wow.
And not all of them did I even get Democrat out of my mouth. There are some people, as soon as they see you and they see any sort of like political-ish jargon at all, they're like, no thanks. And they just shut the door, then they don't give you the opportunity. And at first I took that as in they're a Republican. And then one day I was like, hold on a second. Every time I talk to a Democrat, the Democrat always thinks they're the only one. They're like, oh my gosh, you mean there's two of us?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Yes.
And so I was like, wait a minute. Why would I make the assumption that the person slamming the door in my face is a Republican? If every Democrat thinks they're alone, wouldn't the person be assuming that I'm a Republican and not a Democrat?
Hmm.
If, if, if I'm, if they are the only Democrat that exists in Westfield, why would they think I'm a Democrat?
Ding 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 ding.
Republicans come into their door.
Ding ding.
So, right? And so I said on one of them that was, as the door was getting slammed, I was like, I'm a Democrat, if it helps. And she reopened the door and she goes, you what?
See?
And I said, I'm a Democrat. And she was like, are you kidding me?
Oh my God, you have no idea, Alexis, how many times I have traveled this state and talked to communities and been like, I need you to be, to stand up and be a proud Democrat. You never know. Every county I've gone to, I'm like, oh, there's no, I thought I was the only one. Because you don't get out and talk to nobody. Thank you.
And I know.
I would, I would like to thank you for being a prime example of the, the things I've been talking about for six. Yes, I'm patting myself on the back right now. I'm patting myself on the back. Thank you for being a prime example of everything that I've been telling people when I travel around this state. Be proud, stand up, be a Democrat because you never know. And here you are proving me absolutely, positively right. Thank you. Go ahead with your story though.
I ju, I just feel like if you're not proud of who you are, like what the hell are you doing with your life?
Ooh, 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 ooh. That almost goes back to what me and you talked about earlier today. I'm not even going to mention it, but I'm just, right? Doesn't it, doesn't it? See?
Yep.
I'm loving it. I love it.
So I'm just like, this is me. I don't, I don't need you to like me. I don't need you. I like myself plenty, trust me. Like, I'm good, okay?
Okay.
I don't need people, just kind of a foster mom. Come on, like, you don't sign up to be a foster mom because kids are like so thankful that you like saved them. Like, no, they're, they hate your guts.
Right, especially teenagers. You, 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 you starting with teenagers. It can only go downhill from there.
Somebody asked me, like, what makes you think, like, you have a really thick skin? And because I cry, because I'm a, I'm an emotional person, they're like, oh, you have really thin skin? No, I don't. I, I cry happy tears when things make me happy. If you don't like me, cool, you're lost.
Tell them again. Say it, say it again. I'm amazing. Hello? And on top of that, everybody has tear ducts, last time I checked. And that's like, there, there are some people who are born without tear ducts. But for the most part, most of us are born with tear ducts. Therefore, tears should come out of the tear ducts. There is nothing wrong with tears, okay?
Yeah.
That's passion.
Yeah, I'm, that is definitely a word that has been described to me many, me many times, passionate. I just don't do things I don't, I'm not passionate about. Like, what's the point of doing it if you don't love it? So anyway, so I'm, I am loving it. I was going to say something, I lost my train of thought.
That's okay. Me, you, we, we already knew earlier today that we could, we were just going to go and have a good time today. You know, that's all. All right, well, let me lead you somewhere. You know, okay, once you win, we talked about the things you want to work on, but there's always that one that, I, I understand the collaboration, but we got to dig into some gritty, gritty handsome policy. Because we already know that the council is the fiscal body of the, the municipality. What is the first thing that you hope to work on? Whether you are an author or a co-author on, what's that first, that first ordinance?
Ooh, first ordinance?
Mm-hmm. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta talk brass tacks, we gotta do it.
I don't know if I have an ordinance off the top of my head, but my first two things I want to accomplish when I get in there is I'm going to be a strong vote yes on the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay.
We don't have one that is.
Oh, wait, you're going to be voting on whether or not to get a Parks and Rec Board?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, our current council voted no.
What?
And we, without a Parks and Rec Board, we are not able to apply for grants from the federal government. Where they just, like, literally it's free money. We just need a Parks and Rec Board so they can give it to us. So we can improve parks and rec and the green space and stuff. And right now, our taxpayer dollars is paying for it. So by voting no, you're, you're actually not being a good steward of taxpayer dollars, right? You're not being conservative financially at all. You are saying, no thanks, I don't want the free money.
Well, it's not really free money, it's our money. I mean, right? But, but it's, it's money that we've given to the federal government. And if other communities are getting it, why shouldn't we get our share? That's how, man, come on, come on.
So that, and then also, we have an intersection that's a problem at 161st Street and the Monon Trail. And it's an issue and that needs to become a tunnel because it's just very confusing. And I'm not going to name names or throw anybody under the bus, but there's no tunnel there and there needs to be a tunnel there for the safety of the community. Nobody should have to risk their life crossing the street. Whether or not you think they're stupid, doesn't matter. It's confusing because every intersection along the Monon Trail is different. And you have some drivers that are being polite and stopping when they shut it and telling bikers to go on. And the other driver coming the other direction is following the laws of the road and don't know that the other person stopped when they shouldn't have. And so they're going. And so then all of a sudden you have a kid on a tricycle in the middle of the road and you're about to knock him over with your vehicle. So it doesn't matter if we think people aren't stupid. And if they just use the system correctly, it wouldn't be a problem. The same people saying that are also the same people that went against Endot's recommendation when they said, this is not going to work. This is going to be a problem. This should be a tunnel.
Oh, so they hard headed.
Yes. Certain people think that they know better than the experts and make decisions based on saving money right now. Even though now that this is going to get approved eventually down the line anyway, because none of them got reelected during the primary, it's going to get fixed anyway. Now it's going to cost even more money because you waited.
Right, right, right.
Like, it always costs more the longer you wait. We need to start being proactive and stop being reactive to every situation.
And what's the second thing?
We need some moms. And we need some moms up there.
Come on, moms. What, what's the second thing? The, the tunnel?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, okay, I'm sorry. You were so good, I, I was, I want more. I want you to give me more. Like, I am so into you right now. I am so feeling it.
Okay, okay. I, there is one ordinance. I have to still do some digging to figure out the whys and if we can change it and what the issues are exactly. But something that's come up a couple of times, people's doors that their concerns are on, they have ponds in their backyard. And there's an ordinance currently that they can only be three feet deep. And because of that, we've added so many more people. The ponds are, we're getting backflow and they're like coming up and flooding properties. And so they need to be deeper. So that's something that I need to look into because that's something more than one.
Yeah, yeah.
Community member has expressed an issue on.
Yeah, you're going to need an environmental engineer on that one and, and, and urban, you know. So yeah, yeah. But I love, I love how you're taking the information that you're getting from door knocking and applying it to how you look at things. That, that to me is the essence of a really good public servant and a great politician.
That was really hard for me actually, because right out of the gate, they're like, okay, what's your platform? And I'm like, I don't know, I haven't knocked on any doors yet. Like, there was literally, they were like, no, people need to know what you're going to do. And I'm like, I'm going to do what they want me to do.
I love it, I mean, I love it.
I really want to go to every single door. Whether you like me or not, whether you vote for me or not, I need to know what you want. So I know what you want me to do with a public servant position. It's not a Alexis knows everything and, and I'm in charge and you do what I say. Like, I'm not power hungry here. I'm trying to literally make the community better. I can't do that by myself.
I love it. I love it. Indiana's Own Dana Black Turn Left. We are talking to Alexis Lowry, who is running for Westfield City Council District Four. Man, the time has come to an end, but I'm, you brought me so much joy tonight. I would like to thank you for blessing me with all this fabulous energy. Very seldom do I meet anybody that matches my energy and you matched it. You, you exceeded it. You are that and then some. You are that and a bag of chips. All right, tell the people where they can find you.
Oh, man. AlexisForWestfield.com is my website. You can follow me on Facebook, Alexis For Westfield, or on Instagram, AlexisTheNumber4Westfield. So Facebook, it's spelled out F-O-R. Instagram, it's the number four.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a few other things too, but it's not super active because we weren't getting as much traction there. So basically Facebook and Instagram.
I love it. And do you have, and you're, you're door knocking and canvassing every day, correct?
Every day, every single door. I'm, I'm, I don't go past. And also just throwing it out there, if your door says no soliciting, I'm not soliciting, so I still knock. If you don't want to talk politics, friendly advice, I would add no politics.
Exactly. I remember, I remember I was door knocking in McCordville and somebody called the police on me. And, and the police were like, well, there's no soliciting. I said, sir, I'm not soliciting, I'm canvassing. And I said, do you think a politician would pass a law that wouldn't allow them to talk to their neighbors? And then because, because I was prepared for the police, because you know, you know, canvassing while black, I actually asked them, I said, do you live in the neighborhood? Can I get your vote? So I literally turned that whole interaction into a pitch, so.
Yeah, I actually, I met with all the department heads of the city and I did it an entire day, shadowing the police department. So the one time the police got called on me, it was so, I'm sorry, it was so comical though. Because I was trying to explain to her, like, I'm not doing anything wrong. And she's like, it's private property. And I'm like, every property is private property that I knock on, like.
What are you talking about, chick? Right.
It's not special. So she called the cops on me and the cop that showed up. So I had just met, shadowing the department the day before and he was like, oh, Alexis, what's going on?
So maybe it's, it's, maybe it wasn't just a black thing, it was just canvassing with high energy.
Yeah, I was like, okay. But anyways, it was funny because they showed up and they knew exactly who I was. And they were like, do your thing, you're fine, I'll take care of it. I was like, thank you.
Well, you have been a joy and you are, your light, your light shines bright. Continue to keep that light, even through all the adversity that you've gone through. Obviously you have a strong family. I love Josh. I, I apologize for not, you know, I'm an old lady. I, I see lots of people, I ain't going to lie.
Dude, dude, I, I get it now. I'm knocking on every door. Every time I go anywhere, I'm like, do I know them?
Right? And then, and I literally looked at your name and I was like, I feel like I know that name. But it's like, nah, I'm not trying to talk to.
I came up and introduced myself to you at the event in downtown Indianapolis a couple of months ago. The Democrat, what was that? You were, somebody was speeching, the mayor of Indianapolis was doing his speech and you were like.
HH Dinner. HH Dinner, yes, yeah, okay. That's it. And I was hyped that night. I was hyped, but you were awesome. I wish you the absolute best of luck and I do believe that you are going to win. Your, your energy is infectious. Like I said, I very seldom meet anybody whose energy level matches mine and you far exceeded. So I wish you all the luck in the world. Thank you so much for giving us your time tonight. Hang on just one second. Hey, guys, you know me, Trinity Haven is hosting their, their annual homecoming event. Why is this event so important? Unlike Alexis and Josh, who are willing to take in children who need love and affection, we have parents who are tossing their children to the side because they are LGBTQ plus. And right now, we only have one residence in our entire state that provides affirming living conditions, affirming living experiences for trans and the rest of our LGBTQ plus youth who are at risk of homelessness or a risk of housing insecurity. We have two distinct programs. One program is that we have a house that houses nine young people for two years. And we house them for two years. And then we also have a host home program where if you have a space in your home for a young person for six months or, you know, or more, then they would be able to come and stay in your home for six months until they can get where they need to be. And so what we do is we raise money so that we can support this plan. This is, it, it costs money. You know, the kids want the high speed internet, they want all the, you know, the stuff.